Good afternoon. Call this closed session meeting for September 8, 2025 to order. Time is 4:00 PM. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Beaver.
Here.
Councilmember Miller.
Here.
Mayor Thorpe.
Here.
Absent from this meeting is Councilmember Woolsey and Mayor Protem Venable.
Thank you, ma'am. With that, no public comments, I presume?
No comments.
Okay. We'll move into our conference room. Time is still 4:00 PM. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Call to order our normally scheduled September 8, 2025 city council meeting. Our invocation this evening will be with Pastor Randy Balling for the invocation, followed by our new captain with the Pledge of Allegiance. Could you all please rise?
Please bow your heads in prayer with me. Our Heavenly Father, we come to you tonight with grateful hearts for the privilege of gathering in this chamber to serve the growing number of people who call Ukepa home. We thank you for the freedoms we enjoy and for the leaders who have stepped forward to guide this community. Lord, we acknowledge that true wisdom comes from you, as your word says in James 1:5. If any of you lacks wisdom, you should ask God, who gives generously to all without finding fault. Today, we ask that you grant this council clarity in decision-making, unity in purpose, foresight in planning for the future, and insight into loving their city well. Lord, we know it is impossible for this group of leaders to please everybody, so guide their thoughts beyond just the loudest person in protest or the rogue alarmist who is in crisis. Help them to see the bigger picture, the collective impact their choices will have on families and businesses and generations to come. May their leadership be marked by integrity, humility, and a desire to serve with justice and compassion. Where it says in Proverbs 29:18, "Where there is no vision, the people perish." And so, we ask that you would give them the vision that they need, that is rooted in biblical wisdom, and care for the common good. Lord, I also want to lift up the search for the next city planner. It's underway with the input from the community through the public survey that was launched on May 23rd. Would you grant discernment and unity in selecting the leader who will best serve Ukepa's future? And as this council sorts through future candidates and considers appointing the next manager, give them wisdom to choose someone with skill, vision, faith, fiscal integrity, and a heart to serve this community well. I pray your blessing on the city staff, our first responders, our pastors, and every citizen who is blessed to call Ukepa this crowning jewel of the Ulan Empire home. May this be a community known not only for growth and opportunity, but also for kindness, fairness, and the strong foundations that are built on godly principles. We entrust this meeting and this city into your hands. It's in Jesus' name that I pray. Amen.
The Pledge of Allegiance of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with the redeemed and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor. Thank you, Captain. Madam Clerk, would you please call roll?
Councilmember Beaver.
Here.
Councilmember Miller.
Here.
Councilmember Woolsey.
Here.
Mayor Protem Venable.
Here.
Mayor Thorpe.
Here.
All present.
Thank you, ma'am. Your city attorney, anything to report at a closed session?
Thank you, Mayor. There is no reportable action out of this evening's closed session.
Thank you, sir. Interim City Manager, any changes to the agenda?
No changes to the agenda.
Okay. And no special presentation tonight, so moving on into our public comment. Just as a reminder for those that have to, public comment slips in, please state your name, your address, and remember the three-minute timeframe. Thank you.
We will start tonight with Mike Barron, followed by Richard Frost.
Good evening, council staff. I was watching your meeting last week, or the last meeting that you had for the warehouses and the six-and-a-half-hour meeting. There were a couple of statements that were made in there. Go back, 2006, let's start with there before we get to that, where I had come to the council, to the Planning Department, to Planning Commission back in 2006 with the work studies and things, asking, I'm a resident of Calamaesa. I was asking about access to Livoe Canyon Road and our little sliver that we have for the project that was Fiesta at the time. Now it's changed its many things now. And that little sliver to get access to Wildwood Canyon Bridge, the future bridge that was going to be built. And then after watching the, you know, what you had with the warehouses and the road going down further, I wanted to come to you guys and let you know that we would like to see something as, you know, the resident of Calamaesa, if we can get a road going to Livoe Canyon Road from the back of our property, it's very close. We had a deal with the property owner there, who was the movie guy, that we could actually purchase land from him. Well, I'd say Fiesta was going to purchase land from him to get access. But the then-council in 2006 and the Planning Commission 2006, you guys adamantly told us we can go to you-know-what, and we, no way, no how, can't do it. So I was coming here, I was hoping to be able to show you on the map here that I've got. This is the original map in 2005 for the Fiesta project, which is now Mesa Verde. And the one you showed up there, I don't know where that one is, I haven't seen it yet, but it's not come before the Planning Commission yet. So if I could, I'd love to show you this one here. You can see on this map here exactly where I'm talking about what access points we would like to see. Because according to what you're doing now, it's more accessible to us here than what was back in 2006, where we were absolutely saying, no, because the roads are really close. So I just wanted to bring that up to your attention and let you see what I've got here, so you can see it. Because like I said, I've been working on this since 2006 and following this thing very closely, because I live right there, that valley. When you guys built the new warehouse there, because you had this picture at the back of the red warehouses or the commercial area, the picture right there and the line going right there, like it was an access to County Line Road, you lost that when you built the warehouse there. County Line Lane is the only access that you have. And there was no, you know, access to that anymore once the warehouse was built. So I was thinking, this could be mutually beneficial between the two properties, because they want to use, from what I'm seeing, they want to use County Line Road. You got a warehouse there, we've got schools there, that traffic is horrendous. And then, of course, with Caltrans doing their nastiness to us underneath the freeway there, it's just a nightmare, and I have to drive that every single day. So I'd say my time's just about out. So that's all I wanted to bring up to you guys. Thank you.
Richard Frost. Followed by Robert Coleman.
Richard Frost, Ukepa. And, yeah. I've heard there are a lot of empty storefronts in Ukepa, especially on Ukepa Boulevard. You know, Citibank left a long time ago, and that grocery outlet was supposed to move in. They're claiming they're going to move in, but I've read recently they've had a lot of store closings around the country. And the Big Lots store, that was the only Big Lots to close in the area because they didn't have a refrigeration system, which cost them a lot of business. So that's, but I just wanted to comment on that.
Robert Coleman, followed by Mary Ruder.
Hey, good evening. Robert Coleman, 13701 Calamaesa Boulevard. And I'm actually here tonight to speak about a consent item. I think it's item number three. It's the second reading of ordinance number 463. And basically, this is, you're looking for a responsible party. You're looking for somebody to tie something to if a property's not being maintained, if it's got code enforcement violations. And the way this is written, basically, the person that you're labeling as a responsible party is going to be guilty until they're proven innocent. Let's talk about how this will be implemented, if passed. Most likely, the code enforcement officer will identify the property. They'll look for the responsible party who they think is responsible. If it's a property manager, they'll say, hey, this is the manager who I think is responsible. I remember there being a sign on this property. Well, the city doesn't have a list or a filing cabinet of all of the current active property management contracts that we have. Every property management contract is different. Some of them are financial-only, some of them are, hey, I'm going to take care of all of your bills. Every single one of them is different. It's a contract. So not one is the same, and there's no way that that code enforcement officer could know who's responsible for what. And if you're going to go through, I can already see the letter coming in. I would get the letter, I would have to then come down here, spend time working with the code enforcement officer to prove that I'm not the responsible party. Meanwhile, it's taking time out of my day. I don't need to do that. You guys have the responsible party. That's the property owner who's responsible. If that property's not doing what it needs to do, you fine him. You levy his property. That's the responsible party. Not the property manager, not the contractor, not everybody else, not the neighbor who you have on here, but the property owner. So I'm asking you guys to pull this and make sure that you are going to be holding the right person responsible and that that person is actually going to be innocent until proven guilty, not guilty until proven innocent. And by the way, I haven't been here in a while. It's kind of weird to sit in the back and look as far as the changing seats. You don't have that whole back row that was filled up on the doors soon as you walk in by the regular parties. And as far as people here, it's empty. Good job. Means you guys don't have anything really contentious going on, yelling and screaming. So, and I love the fact that you guys have a prayer to start with. That's a good change. So please, keep it up. Thank you for everything.
Mary Ruder, followed by Donna Snodgrass.
Hello, Mary. See, I can't see y'all with these reading glasses. Mary Ruder, I'm here representing the Chamber of Commerce, like I usually am. My address is 10060 Carroll Drive, up on the North Bench. I'd like to start this off by thanking Councilman Chris Venable for referring a new member to the chamber. We are going to be working with Praise Day Care to do their ribbon cutting and get them off to really good starts. So thank you very much for supporting the chamber by doing that. I want to announce that tomorrow morning at 10 o'clock, Go In Postal is a new business in town, and Ashton Alexander is the owner, and we are doing her ribbon cutting. I sent all of y'all an invitation. I know Judy will be there for sure. But we'd like to invite all of you, plus any of the public and any other city officials who would like to attend. That'll be at 10 o'clock. It's in the old 99-cent store shopping center. The thing that I really want to talk to you all about is Autumn Fest. We have, the chamber has had several vendors and small businesses contact us about Autumn Fest. The concern is that, long ago, it was a three-day affair, and it was absolutely incredible. I know, that's how I started my business, being a vendor at the festivals here. When the festivals went from three days to two days, I asked, what's going on? And I was told, hmm, the vendor said that they didn't want to do Sunday. Okay, well, now we only have one day. And I don't know the reason why Autumn Fest is going to be one day. I'm being asked that. And I have spoken to several vendors, because I was a vendor, so I know many of them. And they say, no, I didn't vote for it to go down. They also complained about what they consider an astronomical fee for a one-day event. This is of concern. The festivals here in Ukepa used to be a showcase for local crafters and local small businesses. That doesn't appear to be happening anymore because y'all have priced them out of this. I would like very much for someone to contact me and contact the chamber and let us know so that we can pass this information, whatever it is, on to the people who are asking us. All the festivals brought a great deal of foot traffic to Uptown, which the small businesses desperately need. One day isn't going to do it for us. And I will end by thanking Ben Matlock, I know I saw him there, thanking Ben Matlock for supporting Uptown businesses. I saw him there at Monstros. And I want to urge everybody who goes uptown, introduce yourself if you're a city official. Tell us who you are so that we know the city is actually supporting our small businesses. Thank you.
Mary, can you tell them what that Praise is all about, real quick?
I'm out of time, but is that okay?
Is that all right?
Mayor, that's your decision, sir.
If it's brief, please.
I'll be fast. I talk real fast. Okay, Praise Day Care is an educational program that provides day activities and training and support for individuals with, hang on, I'm old, with intellectual disabilities. I was a teacher, so I have to be careful to call it what it is now, instead of what we used to call that. So they provide support, they provide training, and it's a place for them to go and learn how to do things and socialize. That's what Praise Day Care is. Okay?
Next, we have Donna Snodgrass.
Good evening, council. I have good news for everybody tonight. If you all remember, the Ukepa Valley American Viticultural Area was approved and registered in April of 2024. Since then, we've seen four releases of Ukepa Valley AVA wines. Suveg Cellars and Winery, North Cork Vineyards and Winery, and the Herman York Winery in Redlands had a double release this year. So if you want to visit any of those wineries and support them, Suveg sold out their 23 vintage. It was 2023 where all the vintages. Suveg sold out in two hours. North Cork sold out in 48 hours, the weekend, the first weekend it was released. And Herman York has got a little bit of Ukepa, what they've labeled Ukepa Red, left right now. They've already sold out Snodgrass Vineyard, which was exciting. But they do have a little bit there on Nevada Street in Redlands. If you want to, go over there and taste a Ukepa Valley labeled wine. That's the last that's available for 23. Since we've got the AVA, we've had vineyards come to maturity. We've got Cabernet Sauvignon, Merlot, Zinfandel, Syrah, Malback, Nebbiolo, Barbera, and Petit Syrah. Are all in vineyards around not just the Ukepa city, but the entire AVA, which is almost 37,000 acres, is inside the AVA itself. The 2024 vintages are headed to the bottling machine in about another six weeks. They stayed in the barrel a little longer this year because the grapes were better this year. The vines are getting older and better. The 2025 harvest is underway. I've personally helped harvest three vineyards this year, and we're yielding anywhere from half a ton from the first harvest years, because the vines are only three years old, these are baby vines, up to two and a half tons, which came out of our backyard last Saturday. So we were extremely excited. The grapes are getting much, much more flavorful. We have many, many more micro businesses popping up across Ukepa and in the valley. And we're trying to talk them all to join the Chamber of Commerce. And I'll be reporting more at the next EDAC committee meeting, a little bit more in depth. But things are exciting in Ukepa, and they're getting, and they're getting better. Oh, and the wines from Herman York are being distributed in New York, Texas, New Jersey, Sacramento. They've got Ukepa Valley wine being distributed from the west to the east coast now. Thank you.
I have one more card for item number six. We'll hear that comment when we get to the item.
Thank you, ma'am. With that, is there any conflict of interest that my colleagues wish to disclose at this time? Nope. Okay. Moving to the agenda, consent agenda.
I'd like to pull number three.
Okay.
I'll move approval on the remainder.
You got a first. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. We got a first and a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Item number three.
Stephen Graham Sifico, your city attorney. We have the second reading of ordinance number 463 in front of you, which revises the city's definition of responsible person. I gave a presentation on this at the last meeting. So unless the council would like me to give that presentation again, I'm happy to answer any questions the council member has.
Actually, I would like to hear Trevor Benson give a presentation on this.
Okay. I'm not offended. Come, Trevor. Let's do it.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council. So in short, I think some of your questions, you know, were brought up by the speaker earlier regarding responsible person. Like the speaker earlier said, the city does not have a list of property owners and what their agreements are with that property. That's the responsibility of the code enforcement officer, to do their investigation, their due diligence, to determine who the responsible party is. In our current law, our current law restricts our code enforcement and citing officials' ability to actually enforce the law against the correct person. So I'll give you a couple examples. An example would be, you own a home here in Ukepa. You left for work early, and your contractor showed up at, let's say, 6:15 in the morning. The expectation is, and the law here is in Ukepa, that the contractor can't start doing work until, let's say, it is 7 o'clock. You're at work, you have explained these expectations to your contractor. However, your contractor failed to meet that obligation and started work early and started with the nail guns and the hammering and the air compressors and all that stuff, and disrupted one of your neighbors. Your neighbor's called to complain. Currently, under our current law, we can only cite the homeowner. We can't cite the contractor who actually violated the law. So this kind of cleans that up a little bit. Another example is, let's say you're a renter, you're a homeowner here in the city of Ukepa, but you rent that property out, and your renter has somehow done something that causes code enforcement or the deputies or the fire department to come to that property. That renter created the problem, but unfortunately, under our current law, we can only cite the homeowner. So this law expands the definition of responsible persons to the broadest definition that we think is, you know, you know, responsible for us to request you guys to allow us to, you know, to pass. So that's kind of where we're at with this. Do you have any specific questions?
In regards to like a, if a family member or something, or a caregiver moves in with a homeowner, and the homeowner passes away, okay, and the caregiver continues to stay there, continues to stay there. What is your process? What do you do with that person that's there? How do you go after the, how do you get him out? What's the process?
The best example that I could currently think of is, there is a property currently right now in the city. The homeowner has passed away. And some of the homeowner's children are caring for the property, and they're the caregivers of the property. It hasn't gone through the probate process legally. That home has not been transferred to those people. So they're not the homeowners, they're just kind of the caregivers of the property. This specific property- Uh, this specific property, uh, has become a nuisance for the city. Um, all the windows are busted out of it, the front door's kicked in. It's essentially, it's a drug den. Um, and, uh, right now, we can't cite the homeowner, because they're deceased. So, our only option is to cite the caregiver, uh, which is, which is written in the law, which is what we're asking for.
And I think, uh, you, um, um, you explained to me, uh, that there's a process then, when they won't pay the fines. What is that process? You keep giving them fines and everything. What happens there?
So, for example, let's say, your home had some sort of violation. Uh, we'd obviously work with you to address what the violation is, explain how to correct the violation. Um, and then, after an explanation and some warnings, uh, and let's say there was no effort on your part to correct this violation, we would then move to a fine. Um, because that's really the only teeth that the city has in order to incentivize you to correct the problem. So, sorry. Um, so, keep hitting.
Silence on that, buddy.
Thank you. Um, so, at, every 14 days, unless it's an emergency. If it's an emergency, we're talking like a massive water main break, or a gas line, or a health and safety issue, something like that. Um, we'd come out every 24 hours, or every 12 hours, and we'd keep citing you. But if it's something simple, every 14 days, the code enforcement officer's gonna go and follow up. And if you don't correct the problem, then they're gonna continue to cite you. Uh, if you don't pay the fine, uh, the city has, uh, entered into a contractual agreement with, uh, a company that does our, our processing of our citations, called Data Ticket. And they will go after your tax returns. So, uh, they'll attach our fines to your tax return. So, instead of you receiving X number of dollars next year for your tax return, it's gonna be less a little bit, minus our fees.
Does that play into, um, with state law or anything? Is that coordinate with them? Is there any conflict there?
No, it's completely legal.
It is completely legal. Okay.
Uh, I think our attorney could speak to legalities better than me, uh, but it is completely legal.
Yeah, it's, it's a tried and true method of, of fine collection. There are several different methods of collecting fines. It's a debt owed to the city, so the city can collect it in any other way that a normal entity could collect a debt. Uh, we also have the ability to do special assessments, as well as just regular old liens on the property. I did want to address the, the, uh, property management company perspective, if I could, council member?
Go ahead.
Um, uh, it is, it is not a run-of-the-mill property management company that overly concerns me when we're adding this revision, um, in, into the code. Um, if you look up, uh, California Department of Justice versus Mike Najar, um, and PAMA Management, uh, that is the structure why we are amending our code. Uh, that is a, uh, individual who owns thousands of properties throughout Southern California, used to own some mobile homes, uh, here in the city of Ucaipa. I don't believe owns them anymore. Um, but, uh, by all accounts, would operate substandard properties. And the way this individual evaded local code enforcement was that the property owner for every property was a single-use LLC, just for that property. So, 123 Main Street LLC, 124 Main Street LLC, 125 Main Street LLC. And, that entity would be undercapitalized, so that you could go after it all you wanted. You'd never get any money out of it. But every single one of those entities would contract with a property management company known as PAMA Management, P-A-M-A. If you Google them, you'll see the lawsuit that I'm talking about, that was instituted just a few months ago. And they would suck all the profits out of that entity, but because they were the property managers and not the property owners, it's very difficult for local entities to actually enforce the law against the entity that could fix it. And so, every single one of these, it, it is from a situation that has occurred in this city or our neighboring cities, where they had a very significant code enforcement issue, but they didn't have the tools available to them to enforce it. Um, any one of these tools, just like any, any ordinance that you pass, can be potentially abused, right? But it's up to the city manager and staff to keep our enforcement within the confines of the law. Um, it would be inappropriate to cite a property management company that doesn't have any actual control over the property. So that goes back to Trevor's point, that that would require investigation into that. But I did want to clear up, like, what is the target of these kind of changes?
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Thank you, Trevor.
So, I have a clarifying point, uh, to our public safety manager. Um, obviously, your code enforcement officers, remember the executive branch of government? They're tasked with enforcement. Are property managers in our community guilty until proven innocent? Or is... Are your, are your, are your, are your code enforcement officers gonna do an investigation? Because what the Speaker said is true. I, I, I don't want to have to produce documents to prove my innocence. That's your job to determine, and certainly, I shouldn't be burdened with your investigation. You're being compensated by the people to do such an investigation. Why am I burdening myself and my time, um, to drive to City Hall and produce documents to prove my innocence? I'm, I'm not guilty. I'm not the owner. Now, um, I, as I read the, as I read the, um, ordinance, it lists one through 10, um, with the property owner, as shown on the last equalized assessment roll or otherwise identified through public records, as being the first, the first bullet point. Um, and then moving on down to the last one, reads, "A family member, caretaker, or other occupant who exercises control over the use or con, uh, condition of the property." It might understand that this is something that you guys would be going in order of, first starting with the property owner, going through that. Because I, I could see it happen, right? Because you're a property owner. And I come to you and say, hey, your property's in disarray. And you're gonna say, well, yeah, that's, that's well and good. Here, here's a contract with the company. I paid a deal with that, deal with that. Is that what you're gonna do?
I, in the terms of, if you're talking about, you know, in the sense of a property management company, yes. Is that always the case? No. Sometimes we'll go after, let's say, the renter of a property who's creating the problem.
Sure.
But in the ten, the terms of a property management company, yes.
Owner first.
Owner first.
Okay. Presumably, the owner, if they feel that they are not responsible for the, the issue, and that it is the property manager, they would produce the document that you would, for their innocence, right?
Absolutely.
Because you're, you're claiming they're guilty of some, of a crime. They're the ones who are responsible for the condition of the property. And if they then say that, well, it's the property... To, to some of our love, you're not gonna ever go to the property managing company first and say, you're, you're the problem.
Absolutely. Like, like I said earlier, you know, this is where the due diligence, the investigation comes in to determine who actually the responsible party is. Should the owner have some sort of documentation to prove that their responsibility is on the property manager to maintain this property, then that's where we go after the property manager.
Okay, so then, last part of it, you are, um, relatively new to overseeing code enforcement?
Mm-hmm.
Um, can I say relatively? It's been about a year, maybe, or ish? Um, do you oversee investigations that your code enforcement officers, or, or, um, their, their reports? Do you see what they're doing? Would you be the one that catches if they're doing something improper?
Yes.
Okay. So you're, you'd be the one to see that they're, um, going after a pro, a property manager, when in fact, the code, the property owner is the one that they should be focusing on?
Yes, so, every single time one of our code enforcement officers, uh, initiates some sort of enforcement action against a citizen of our city, it has to come to me for review first. Uh, during that process, I'll review the entire investigation, uh, any documents that are associated with it, any photographs that are just associated with it, and make sure that it meets, you know, my standard and the legal standard. And if it does, then it'll move forward. If it doesn't, then we'll kick it back to the code enforcement officer for an additional investigation. Um, and, on that note, um, because of your support in this last budget cycle, our code enforcement officers have some new investigative tools, some databases that they previously didn't have, that really help them dial in who the responsible person is in all these cases.
Yeah, innocent until proven guilty is the law of the land. So, should be no different here in Ucaipa. With that, unless there's anything else, I'll move approval on the item.
Any other comments?
Yes, I just wanted to summarize. Uh, last time, um, I did second this motion, and I know I pulled it this time. And I just felt like I wanted to address that a little bit. Um, in the mobile home park that we live in, we have constant problems, uh, not constant, but we've had them. Uh, where, as I previously said, parents will move in a child and that type of thing. So, um, we are familiar with what kind of work, um, that takes too. And it's a long, drawn-out process. It really is. And, um, I understand the goal is to clean up our areas in Ucaipa. And, uh, staff is very familiar and aware of how I feel about junk cars and junk, uh, houses. I'm constantly asking them, you know, about what's going on with our houses that are to come down. County tax electors, uh, collect taxes by going after the owner, not someone that's living there. Uh, I'm still, I was hoping that there might be some more discussion from the coun, other council members. I'm still kind of on the fence on this, so, I'd like to, you know, be the last to vote on this, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I thought a lot about it this, because we, we've got the 10 subsections here. And really, the goal is to try and, try to find the RP, right? We're trying to find the responsible party that we can do, uh, I know we start out with compliance, correct, Trevor? But on occasion, there has to be an enforcement tool to actually get compliance, which may involve fines, or, or try to find the, the responsible party to clean it up first, or whatever the issue is. Because on occasion, a neighbor will call about a house or some issue. Uh, you know, I, I've talked to several people in our community, uh, that are concerned about a house. They take care of their property, they maybe have some homes that they own, or they're redoing in town, and they see three down the street are horribly maintained. So they're looking, they contact us, who's the RP, how's it being taken care of? So really, the, the spirit of this is to try to find a responsible party. But, uh, Mr. Coleman makes a good point. Uh, if you're a property management company, and you have 450 properties under there, and you have a, maybe a track record of maybe taking some properties and actually making them better, how do we hold them responsible? It should be the owner, or the actual person that's living there, not the property management person. Uh, you know, I, yes, they do a contract, and I'm sure they, we don't know exactly what their contract. That's their business. I'm sure they're responsible in what properties they take and how they vet them. I hope they do. Um, and not that example of the court case, uh, that the city attorney say, though I do appreciate that, there is precedent for that. But, um, y, you know, it's always about trying to find that responsible party. I totally get why we're putting this forward. I would want to amend the motion for approval with, uh, item number five, uh, pulled out of that. Uh, it reached, the, the good property management companies, I don't think we've had a problem that I know of, Trevor. Have we in our town? Have we had any issues that I'm aware of?
Not that I'm aware of outside the mobile home parks, no.
Okay, um, that, that could be a concern. You're right. I mean, never say never, right? Uh, in our business.
Outside the mobile home parks, I'm not aware of any property management companies that have, you know, brought any concern.
And it is something we could revisit, but I would amend the motion for approval with, uh, removing item five out of the ordinance, if we can do that, Mr. City Attorney.
Uh, so that would convert this to first reading again? So it would be to...
Bring it back.
Uh, essentially amend the ordinance and bring it back for second reading and adoption at your next regular meeting.
That's my motion.
Okay, I've got a question first. Um, Mr. Miller, if we pull number five out of there, and the only way to get a property resolved in an issue, outstanding issue, how do you propose that city staff or code enforcement move forward when dealing with a management company or somebody that's managing properties?
Well, I, I think, uh, when we were talking about how you investigate the case, uh, you're just trying to find the RP. We'll find usually the property owner or the responsible party in some way out of the other nine that are listed there. We're gonna find somebody through the investigation. We are definitely gonna contact the, the management company that has signed some agreement to run the property. That will be part of the investigation. There's no doubt about it. I just don't know if we hold them responsible for the fact that the owner hasn't taken care of the property. The, the, maybe the property management folks have notified the owner, hey, clean up your mess, we're starting to hear, uh, complaints about it, but they're not doing it. It's the property owner's responsibility to clean up their property, in my view. That's what I mean by it, Mr. Mayor.
What if the property management company is under contract to maintain the property?
That's a good point. If that's part of their contract, that would be part of their investigation.
But then, the question is, so I don't think this ordinance should be an investigative checklist for our code enforcement officers, and I don't think that's what it is. I think what it is, is what gives them the authority to cite somebody. Absent that number five, a, a rogue property management company could not be held liable, unless I'm misreading it. Is that accurate? Because by, by definition, they're not responsible, under our ordinance, as a property management company, to maintain, uh, property, even if by contract. Is that right?
That, that is correct. The, the intent of specifically listing them is, we have difficulty in enforcing against a property management company who we believe to be the responsible party for a nuisance, absent express authority in the code.
So that's where I kind of went with, if, like, I've been enforcing, I've been investigating allegations of misconduct or, uh, crimes for almost 20 years. The person who's responsible is the owner. That's the person who's responsible. So when they, and that is the person, and, and Mr. Coleman is absolutely right. If I'm, I'm under contract to collect money, that's all I'm under contract for. Well, when the property owner, as I'm investigating, said, hey, you're in violation of our municipal code for weeds or whatever else, and then the property owner goes, really? Here's a contract I have with best-in-the-world property management that says they're gonna do all that. My evidence just shifted my investigation. I have, I have documentation that says otherwise. Now, he's not proving his, he's not proving his innocence. I have now probable cause belief he's guilty of a crime. Right there, there's my evidence. I can't fabricate that if the contract says, best-in-the-world property management is responsible for collecting funds only, period. No. He's responsible for money collection, not for weeds. You're on the hook. So, this is, I, I, in the beginning, when I first looked at it, I'm like, oh, that's a, that's an investigative checklist. It's not. This is what says, can you be, can you, as a property management company, be in violation of law in Cal, in, in Ucaipa? And if we remove number five, the answer is no, no, you cannot. It doesn't meet the element of the crime.
Uh, Councilman Bieber, you make a very good point. Because if you, I, I see what you're saying. We assume that, you know, all property management companies are gonna be fined. This is the only way that you can use an enforcement arm, is what you're telling me. Um, after investigation, yeah, I understand. I, you know, I looked at it first, when I first looked at it, but, you know, I, I gotta be honest with you. I think our property management companies in town do a pretty good job. But you never until they don't. It's like we've learned that lesson for years. Um, and you need some kind of an enforcement tool. So, uh, thank you for your, your, uh, your diligence with me, uh, maybe educating me a little bit.
So, if the property management company fails to pay this, does, does it go back to the property owner? Or do you put liens on the property and tell that, and then let the property owner fight with the management company?
We would necessarily only, uh, cite the property management company if they had some sort of contract identifying them as being responsible for maintaining the property. Uh, if they were not responsible for maintaining the property, most co, property management companies are, are not. Uh, it's the property owner or, or renter's responsibility. Uh, but if they did, there was some sort of contract that, uh, identified the property management company as having sole responsibility for the upkeep and the cleanliness, or whatever the issue was that we were, you know, trying to address, uh, and we cited the property management company, I guess it would go against a ta, it would go on a tax lien against the property, yes.
So, I would just, my thing would be not getting in the middle of what the prob, management company and the owner would be. So if, if, if we find the owner of the property and let them battle it out with the property management company, I mean, would, is that the steps of, I mean, I, I don't know. I'm just asking questions.
No, I, I understand. I, I don't really know either. I think that the case that, uh, Stephen brought up earlier is, is kind of poignant in the sense that, um, we wouldn't have anybody necessarily to cite, because there really isn't an owner of the property, because they're all in individual LLCs.
Oh, right.
So, the, the owner in this case is a liability shield. So, what, the, the enforcement issues that I'm seeing, again, is not a, you know, retired couple who's renting a house, and they hired a property management company to manage it. That's not the fact pattern that we're more likely to use this definition of responsible person for. It's when you have a bad actor who has intentionally created a liability shield, where they say, okay, you can only cite the owner. Well, guess what? I'm not going to be the owner. There's gonna be an LLC that's created just to own this property, and that LLC is gonna contract with me, and I'm gonna be the property management company, and all profits are gonna flow to me. And so in that case, if all we can do is cite the owner, we're gonna cite an LLC that doesn't have any revenue coming into it. And eventually, it'll stack up, and you'll get fines and liens levied on the property. But, the goal in this case is to pierce that liability shield. Um, I, I, that's the best way that I can explain it. I, I think we're, we're coming up with fact patterns that, those aren't the fact patterns we're gonna use this tool for. We're gonna, in those fact patterns, you have a, an owner who's operating their property as a nuisance. And if you look at the, if you go, if you leave the list, leave the list for a second, and go up to the definition of responsible person, it's... it's the person responsible for creating, causing, maintaining, contributing to, or permitting the public nuisance, right? So if the owner is the one creating the public nuisance through their investigation, then that is the proper person to cite.
And if it's a
Even if they have a property management company.
We don't have any kind of remorse if it's just a renter, right? I mean, you can fine them and stuff, but.
If, if, if the renter is quote-unquote at fault for creating the issue, and they would be the most responsible person, we will cite the renter. If it's an issue that is beyond the renter's real responsibility, then we'll cite the property owner.
So if you cite the renter and they bail?
We'll go after their tax returns.
Oh.
Yes. So hypothetically
Hey, I'm just, I'm asking questions. I'm learning.
Under our current law right now
I'm learning a lot right now. So this is just
Here's a good example for, like, the renter issue. Under our current law right now, you rent a property, you're the owner of a property, and you have somebody that's renting the property, and they're blaring music at eleven o'clock at night. Their neighbors call and complain. The deputies go on scene and issue administrative citation for, you know, loud music. Right now, currently, the only person that could actually be cited for that is the property owner, not the person actually causing the problem. That's the renter. We'd like to cite them. Now, sometimes there's a benefit to that as well, though. Because then the landlord evicts the problem, and now the problem doesn't exist there anymore.
That's true.
This is a, this is a weird piece of law, because it really is toeing the line between criminal and civil. And a lot of these things are going back to, well, if owner and property manager have a contract, that's a civil matter for them. What do we care? I'm going to cite the property owner, and he's going to sue his property management company in Superior Court and let them decide it. Unless the property owner isn't a real person, but rather an LLC. But then, you know, listen. We have some experts in the field that we've put in charge of our code enforcement. They're investigators. You're an investigator. I've seen your resume. I don't for a second think this is going to be abused. Obviously, our city attorney said every ordinance we have could be misenforced, and it comes, now it comes back to a problem. At the end of the day, we're giving, this is a tool, in a toolbox, for our code enforcement officers to go after a problem. And they are, everybody is innocent until proven guilty, absolutely. But I don't want to, I don't want to venture down the road of, well, everybody in our, every property management company in our city is great. They are. Until they're not. Or until somebody comes along, this new property management company that starts having, now we're having issues with. And we're like, hey, well, Trevor, this is like the eighth time I got a phone call on this property. Why aren't you thinking about it? And he's going to say, well, do you remember on September eighth, when you robbed me of my option to do that? Oh, yeah, you're right.
I would never say that, sir.
You wouldn't say it to Councilman Beaver, which you might say to Justin.
Yeah, I just, I'll bring it back to this. Trevor, thanks for what you do. You know, code enforcement's a tough job, because when you show up to the door, it's usually not the best news for somebody, because you're asking them to clean something up, or you've given them several chances, and then you might have to do an enforcement mechanism, which is a fine or a citation. And you get, you know, you probably get complaints. There's no doubt about it. But it does deal with quality-of-life issues, which has a direct correlation to crime.
Absolutely.
So it's a necessary job, what you're doing, even though we've talked twenty minutes about item five. It is necessary. And it's good we debate things. That's what we should be doing. But thank you for what you guys do and your whole team, because I'm sure it's an unappreciated job sometimes. But we do appreciate what you do out there, because it does affect crime in the long run by cleaning communities up.
I appreciate it. I'll pass.
Especially when you didn't, especially when you didn't apply for it. I know this was not what you applied for. I know your job was being an emergency manager, and we voluntold you to be in charge of it. And you're doing a great job, but
Appreciate it.
I know it wasn't something you sought out when you first applied to work for the City of Ucaipa. We have a tendency of overutilizing our employees, so congratulations.
Roll the punches.
Madam Clerk, could I see somebody bring you a slip? Do we have another comment?
Yes, somebody did bring a slip. However, we heard from this gentleman during general public comment on this same item. So it's up to the mayor if you would like to hear his comment again.
So he's already spoken on the item?
He has, yes.
Okay. So we've got a motion on the floor. Yours is the first motion.
We have a slip from Dennis Miller.
On this item?
Yes, on this item.
Okay.
Good evening. Dennis Miller. The issue you were talking about and who's the responsible party and that, I think we need to start rolling back and make sure that the system we have now works in order. I filed a complaint on several properties in this community about nine months, oh, not nine months ago, ninety days ago, okay? Those properties happen to be owned by the City of Ucaipa. They're in the same condition, for the most part, that they were ninety days ago, okay? And I understand you're working on it, okay? But we need, this city needs a lead by example, not by exception. We have some properties that are in disrepair, that are owned by private individuals. But as a city, we need to be a leader, and we need to lead by example. So first, we need to take care of those items first. Second item is, is that I've filed a couple of complaints on a couple of properties that I have worked with clients on where there's been code violations, some of them with horse manure. That one has been over a hundred and twenty days, and that issue still hasn't been resolved. And the responsible owner is, the responsible party is the owner. Still hasn't been fixed. I filed one the other day on a property on County Line Road, on a flag lot with a lot of equipment and debris on there. That is currently, that has now been sold at a tax sale. When I came in to file the complaint, code enforcement told me, it says, well, we've closed that file. And I said, how could you close that file? It's a disaster. The neighbors are upset. And they go, well, we've closed. And I says, well, then I would like you to reopen it and address this issue. So before we start changing the rules, let's take a look at what we have and this massage that a little bit and make sure we're enforcing what we have already before we start adding more to it. And it may be confusing to some of you, but as a property owner in this community, and I've owned hundreds of properties in this community, and I've cleaned up a lot of trash in this community, and I take pride in this community. And I have no problem going over and telling my neighbor to clean it up. But I find I lead by example on how I take care of my properties first. And I would like the city to implement the same values that I do. And I would take a look at some of the items that code enforcement is dealing right now and seeing how they're addressing those issues and making sure that what we have in place right now works. We just need to apply it a little better. Thank you.
Any other comments?
No other comments.
You have your motion on the floor. Do you mind restating it?
I move approval on the item, as written.
Do we have a second?
A second.
I have a first and a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Is your mic on? I don't, did you hear the noes? Two noes.
Two noes.
Okay.
Copy, thank you.
Okay, that brings us to item number six.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. At the request of City Council, I am bringing the wrap-up report for this year's Fourth of July event and options for the 2026 Fourth of July event for discussion. I think it's important to note that in 2025, City Council adopted five goals, with the first goal being to deliver a balanced budget. As a result, there has been a change to special events to find a way for more cost recovery and not as large an impact on the budget. On page fifty-five of the council agenda packet, you will find a detailed report. However, today I'm going to give a brief summary. The Fourth of July event net cost for this year was the lowest cost to date for the city. That cost was twenty thousand two hundred and fifty-nine dollars. Previously, the event partnered with nonprofit groups to host this event. With the cheapest amount that the city provided for those events was to pay for the fireworks, and that was twenty-eight thousand dollars. So again, this year's Fourth of July event only cost the city twenty thousand two hundred and fifty-nine dollars. So I would say that was a success. For the Fourth of July 2026, it is the nation's two-hundred-and-fiftieth anniversary. Staff has prepared a plan to execute according to what council decides this evening. In the council report, we provided four options. Option number one is do not pivot from the adopted budget, which means there will be no event for July 2026. Option two is to plan an event similar to this year's event, which provided no entertainment. The only charge was for parking. We saw the largest crowd to date and had the smallest impact on the general fund. This option would include fireworks, and would require City Council to prove expenditures in the amount of sixty thousand dollars. Option three would be to ramp up the production from last year by bringing back live entertainment, games, decorations, displays. We could do it all, just to honor the two-hundred-and-fiftieth anniversary of this nation. In order to proceed with this option, we would need council to approve expenditures in the amount of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Historically, trends from parking revenue and sponsorship will be used to offset this cost. Option four is to partner with the County of San Bernardino to offer a Fourth of July event at the Ucaipa Regional Park and Ucaipa Community Park. This option could, would differ, as there would not be a fireworks show. In lieu of the fireworks show, there would be a drone show. Actual quotes for the drone show have not been received yet, but a rough estimate was ninety thousand dollars. Therefore, council would have to approve expenditures in between a hundred thousand and two hundred thousand dollars for this event. Staff is recommending that council receive and file the July Fourth, 2025 Celebration and Fireworks Spectacular, and that council provide staff direction for next year's event. This concludes my report, and I can answer any questions you may have at this time.
Thank you, ma'am. Madam Clerk, do we have any public comments?
We do have one public comment, Mr. Benjamin Vail.
All right, I have tiny notes in front of me, so I'm going to try and follow them. Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, and members of the City Council, my name is Benjamin Vail. I live at 11956 Glacier Court. I just want to express my strong support for continuing Ucaipa's Fourth of July fireworks, using option number two specifically. I believe that it's a valued tradition for our families and an important part of keeping our communities safe. First, the first point I want to say is that the city increased fines for illegal fireworks last year to three, five, and ten thousand dollars. I believe that canceling our own city-hostage show would only increase the temptation for residents to buy and use illegal fireworks instead. Maintaining a centralized show is one of the best tools we have to reduce neighborhood fireworks, protect our community from fires, and ensure safety. The increased fire revenues, fine revenues could also help offset the city costs that we have. Second is, I believe that the council can direct staff to place a stronger emphasis on cost recovery. I was happy to hear that the 2025 show did a sixty percent cost recovery. I think there was a fifty-five thousand dollar budget. They came in under at fifty, and we recouped sixty percent. I believe that the city could potentially try to increase their cost recovery, going above sixty percent for this year, expanding corporate sponsorships, increasing vendor opportunities, inviting direct donations from businesses and families, which I would be the first to do. And also, there's a way to partner with a local nonprofit to host a raffle, to be able to raise funds as well. I think these methods could be used, and they are used by neighboring cities. Could be a way for us to potentially get to a goal of having a hundred percent cost recovery for an event like this in the future. Third, it was said, but it's a fun word, so I'll say it again. It's the two-hundred-and-fiftieth anniversary of the signing of the Declaration of Independence. That is the semi-quinsentennial. And there was a commission created by the United States government in 2016 to try to help prepare cities and counties to be able to celebrate well in 2026. I think we have an opportunity to join in with that. And then finally, I think the fireworks show is loved by many of our residents. It's not lost on me that last year we had the largest crowd to date. And also, I would add that if you look in your packet, there's multiple written public comment in support of this as well. And so it's something that a lot of people, I've spoken with my own neighbors. They're excited to get on board and to show up. So, yeah, I just want to urge the council to consider keeping the fireworks show in place for 2026. And I think that the city, if we're concerned about our budget, can focus on cost recovery using option number two to make it even cheaper than this year. And lastly, I want to say, if you do allow us to have a show for next year, my own two children will thank you in advance. Thanks for your time.
Robert Coleman.
Well, hello again. It's been a long time. Robert Coleman, 13701 Kellamas Boulevard. Hey, fireworks in Ucaipa. It's amazing that I'm here tonight. This program, there was actually a hiatus on fireworks in Ucaipa. I think they went three to four years with no fireworks at one period of time. I actually have a copy of the original contract that was brought back in two thousand, two thousand and eleven, between Pyro Spectacular and the, well, actually, it was between, they sent the first contract in my name. And then I was able to forward it over to the people so that we could go get it in the city's name. But at that time, I believe the cost on that contract that I'm looking at was, let's say it was twenty-eight or twenty-six thousand dollars. But still, this is something that's important to the city. This is something that people look forward to. It's taken forever to build from 2011 to now. Don't drop that. Don't make it go away. The two-hundred-and-fifty-year celebration is huge, but it takes time to build this momentum. Don't trade it in and make it some drone show. Keep it going. Keep the crowds coming out. I mean, you have people that are there at the high school. You have people that are watching from the Sizzler Park or from the parking lots up above. You have people that are at Yaps. This is such a great blessing to the community to have. Please don't discontinue this. Keep this going. A lot of good people have spent a lot of man-hours building this. I can't tell you how many hours I personally put into this. J.R. Al Gore, who was just incredible at putting this together. Everybody was there volunteering, the amount of people that came through the day after to clean up all the debris at the high school. So please, continue this. Thank you.
I have no more cards.
Thank you, ma'am. Megan, thank you very much. It was a great presentation. I know previously you and I had a little bit of a conversation about this. And I think the two-hundred-and-fiftieth is a big deal, but I also think our budget's a big deal. I think with the public speaking, the first one brought up talking about trying to leverage support from community members or businesses and whatnot, I think that would be the way to go. So it doesn't impact our budget, but it's going to probably take some oversight somewhere along the line, make sure we have organization to that approach to bringing in funds. I don't know what my colleagues want to do, but I think the option two, with a way of trying to leverage that from some supporters, whether it's businesses or maybe even some of the citizens, if they have that ability to do so. But last year, I don't know if all my council members were there or not. And I was there, and it was the least amount that we had on the field, but yet it was the biggest turnout. And I just sat back and watched. There have been times that we've put a lot of effort and things into bands and stages. And I've sat, and I've looked from here to what the bridge in our park out here, distance between me and the next person. Whereas this last year, there was people, I mean, it wasn't like they were sitting on top of me, but they were a lot closer. And families were playing board games, card games, cornhole, playing catch. I mean, they were just all playing. There was a lot of involvement. I think part of that was because people thought it might be the very last one, because of, we didn't have it in our budget. But I just think there was something to it about the simplicity of it. We already have a really big American flag. So the only thing I would say that, I don't know how we would do it and make it look presentable, but a big spotlight on a big cable or a big ladder off of a truck, maybe a big red truck, and fly the flag so that one can see it, you know, when we're doing our National Anthem and whatnot. But I don't know. I don't know what the colleagues have to say. Let them chime in, but I think having a community partnership is the way to do it. I don't want to impact our budget, because there's always things kind of tugging on that, and we got to try to keep that balanced as much as possible. I'll start on my right.
Thanks.
Mr. Beaver?
Is the, is option four the only rule that exists where the county would want to partner with us? Have we
Have we asked them if they want to partner with something at the high school? I mean...
Yes, they would like to partner at their site, which is the regional park. But I did say that I would return based on council's direction. And if they still wanted to partner, and they didn't choose, you guys don't choose option four, we could see how we can make that work.
So reading option four, let me preface this. I don't think we should do a drone show. I support fireworks. It's in our National Anthem, the bombs bursting in air. Okay, that's how we celebrate. This says this would cost $90,000 and that we should, we should be prepared to... Is it $100,000 coming from our budget? How much is the county gonna be partnering? Is it just the location they're gonna be offering on?
We would share the cost 50/50. We wanted to provide a quote. So there was a lot of talk on social media, like, we shouldn't be doing fireworks. We should be doing drone show. But I think people didn't understand, the drone show is more expensive than fireworks. So this was our opportunity to let everybody know that. And in addition, the county doesn't want fireworks from their property.
Sure. It's very close to the hills. It's dangerous. So I support option number two in this proposal. Let somebody from, whoever you contacted at the county, let them know that in case they didn't know that the city of Ucaipa is in the county of San Bernardino. So it still works for them, still a county-city, and they can partner with us for that. There's been, on that same note, there's been talks on social media about, how come Ucaipa doesn't have a Fourth of July parade? Or how come we don't do it? Maybe this is the perfect year for something that we can try to find a, something that doesn't cost money, to have the people come out and enjoy, like, opening up the field just for use like this last year, just to be there and have, and just that opportunity to be there to celebrate 250th anniversary. Anyway, I'm rambling. I support option number two. I think, I think we let the, like the mayor said, the big American flag speak for itself and celebrate the birthday of that, of our nation.
Councilman, if I could just provide a little more context on those options. As Megan said, we wanted to provide a dollar amount so the council can have some dialogue and put the scope of a potential event, kind of figure out what you guys wanted to do if you wanted to have an event. But whether this is a partnership, that hasn't been scoped out. We're just saying roughly, based on the quotes that we had, $90,000 for a drone show on Fourth of July was the number. However, the specific, what the day would look like, the items, it's just different levels of things that we could put together. If Megan knew, okay, I've got $200,000 to partner with the county and put something really cool together, but the council wants to have fireworks too. There's always the possibility of having an event at the regional park and then in the evening going to the high school to have fireworks. She can do a lot of stuff. She just needs to know, does the council want to have an event? And what dollar amount are we looking at? And then going back to the community participation, volunteers, sponsorships, things like that. If she has the directive of, hey, really go after that and see what you can get done, she can do that too. Really what she's doing is looking for direction on what you guys would like to do.
So when I was wearing a white shirt for the Sheriff's Department, it was an all-hands-on-deck event here for the Fourth of Julies at the high school. And it was on the football field. This was before they went to a, the fake turf, so that the high school didn't have a problem with us all sitting on their grass, but then they didn't want us on the turf because it would get damaged. And I get that. But it was still, it was a big, it was a big thing. The sheriff's department was all, I mean, there was a lot of cops, explorers were there. There was a lot more, I think, community engagement. I think even the high school clubs were all there doing different fundraisers and stuff that they had to do. So even though it was, I think all that would take, and I could be wrong, but if like different high school organizations wanted to have fundraisers there and have fun things to do, it would just be the city saying, yeah, you can do that at this event. And that would cost us nothing, just a blessing that, yeah, you know, if the, you know, future business leaders of America want to have a fun pie-throwing booth, they want to have it as a fundraiser, we just have to say, yes, you can do that. So I'll tell, from my seat, the sky's the limit. Make it fun. I wouldn't, as long as it's tasteful within our city's, you know, culture, then go. There's plenty of, you're brilliant at this. There's plenty of ways to leverage the dollar, right? And find creative ways to find fun things that are costing us almost nothing but benefiting the organization. So I think it should be big. The mayor's right, though. Our budget is a big deal as well. We have to be mindful of that. It's hard for us to say we need to pass a tax, and we need to consider cutting services, and we need to be mindful of the things, but then expend money. I do, I think, because it's such a big deal, there's, I would imagine there's probably more donation dollars out there for us to try to lean on. I know, I think I read in here, one of the radio stations were involved, and I, maybe there's advertising space, but it is a big deal. Our country's been knocked to its knees a time or two over the last 250 years, but we've always come back stronger, and this is worth celebrating. We've leveled up to level 250, and that's worth something worth celebrating. And I think we should pull stuff up in the air. That's a fun way to celebrate, an American way to do it.
So maybe, Chief, you think you can get with Calamasa and see if we can get their ladder trucks, how they did last time with their flag? Maybe you get with Tim? And see if, can we see if Calamasa would partner with us and maybe kind of throw some money our way? And see if, or no? What are we laughing for?
I think it's kind of putting the city manager from Calamasa on the spot.
I didn't know the city manager was right here.
Got the police captain responding for the fire chief. So I think we'll figure out in-house how we can deliver putting up a gigantic American flag.
Grant texted me and asked if I could include the cost of a fire truck in the cost of Fourth of July.
I think that there's enough sponsors out there that we can get, you know. I think that we can get close to the funding that we need, I believe. It's just getting out there. And can we solicit that for them as well? The people that we know?
Yeah, Megan's team works really hard on sponsorships, but you as council can also reach out to your partners in the community or business owners. And if Robert Coleman's still here, it'd be great to maybe get Titan to give some sponsorship would be great because he was involved a long time ago.
He's still here. He's listening.
On record.
And I think that it brings a lot of tax money now that we have the point, you know, with all the food vendors and everything like that and stuff. I think it brings a lot of tax money to our city too that we don't, aren't accounted for, that, which still, you know, there brings extra money for us. But, Mr. Manager, City Manager from Calamasa, maybe we can do some business later.
Councilman Miller.
Thank you. I think you're here for the next item, right? Item seven. So well, thank you for being here tonight and welcome to our town. But we want to do it bigger and better than Calamasa, but I'm just being facetious. You know, Megan, I know you work hard and you have to ask a lot of people for donations and stuff. So it puts a lot of work on your unit, clearly. We know that. But with all that said, I agree with my fellow council members. This probably has to be bigger, better, you know, the big, beautiful celebration. 250, it's a biggie. We probably won't be around for 300. But, you know, festival, parade, fireworks, I think it needs to be the whole thing. But we probably definitely need to reengage with our service groups that used to be so, you know, entrenched in everything we did in town for a while. I know we went to a different model of the revenue model, providing the services even for alcohol at some of the events and stuff. But I think we need to reengage with some of our service groups to assist us in this because there's so many service groups and maybe our faith-based groups also. And we can work on our big vendors. We spend some money in this town for vendors to provide service for us. This is a chance for them to give back. I've already started asking a couple already. They're aware. For the money we, you know, help them with the great service they provide, but I think they want to invest in our community too. And this would be something they would invest because they do business with our town. They can put their name on something they sponsor at the event, and I think it would be wonderful. This is a good time to celebrate in our country. I think our, as Councilmember Beaver said, you know, we have a prideful town, and we're a very American town. We're very patriotic. And I think something like this should be a big deal. I envision a nice parade and everything. So I hope we can get it done, and I think we can. We just got to set the bar high and get going on it because we are already in September. So it'll be here before you know it.
Councilman Woolsey.
Everything that's been said is exactly what I have been saying to myself all week. We need to get the community involved. Churches, love Ucaipa. They love to do things for the city. So let's talk to them, see if they can get involved. Some of the other churches, how about some good old gospel singing events? Whoever does that anymore? You know, let's go back kind of to our original roots. 250 years ago, what would they have done? Let's kind of approach it from that point. Maybe form a committee of some kind that can reach out, you know, to do that. No, I'm not available.
So 250 years ago, if we said something wrong, they would tar and feather us. So we don't have to go all the way back to our roots.
I know, but the concept of, without, you know, of course, getting ridiculous, but there's, we have so many talented people in this town that I'm sure could come up with ideas and concepts, and I agree. Make it a big event because it is a big event.
Thank you, ma'am. So we need to provide them an option. So it sounds like we all have a consensus, but I need a motion.
I'll second Mr. Beaver's motion on number two.
Okay, so I got a first and a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Thank you, ma'am. Item number seven.
Thank you, and good evening, Mayor and council members. This item, this report is a status update for the County Line Road Corridor Improvement Project with an emphasis on the utility construction that has been occurring and also the upcoming repaving schedule of County Line Road. And we've given the city council an update in the past and where we've shared that we, we as staff, you know, we understand the inconvenience that we are hearing from the public regarding the street closures and the delays and the rough driving surface on County Line Road. You know, obviously something that we've been dealing with for a while now. And as we've mentioned before, this project is more than just a traffic circulation improvement project. There's eight utility companies that were doing work and are still doing work on County Line Road. Our Assistant City Engineer Landon Kern will provide an update on the construction of those, of the construction and also the utility companies' work along that corridor and also an update on the repaving. And as council's aware, we do have the city of Calamasa, you know, they're represented here tonight. Their city manager and city engineer will also share some updates on the project if they're still here. And we'll certainly provide some, an opportunity for questions after that. So, Landon?
Thank you for me and for that introduction, and good evening, Mayor and council. As for me mentioned, it was actually just a few months ago in April when we provided our last update for this important corridor and all of the projects that are taking place. We focused a little bit more in April about the utility construction, more of the history. I will touch on some of that tonight. It's an important part of where we've been, coming from, and what's next. Tonight will be more of an emphasis with the update on what's coming next in the schedule of a very busy stretch of roadway that's had a lot of activity going on for many years now. Starting off with the first slide, just to kind of orient us once again and remind us, we're focusing here on the stretch of County Line Road primarily between Bryant Street and Calamasa Boulevard. And an important thing to mention, we've talked already a little bit on the last item about partnerships with the city of Calamasa. With the success of the city of Calamasa obtaining the LPP grant, just under $3.8 million was awarded to the city of Calamasa. And through a partnership with the city of Ucaipa, that was used and that was, the intent of that was to fund the construction of the County Line Road Improvements Project, what we refer to as the LPP Project, primarily the roundabout intersections, the street improvements, ADA and drainage, the other things that go with that. Important to note that with the success of that grant funding, saved both the cities millions of dollars. And with those savings, we did have to work through some significant challenges to complete that work within the grant timeframe and those requirements that came with that, along with all of the other construction contracts that are taking place at that same time in the same location. So this slide that I've thrown up here, we've seen it before. This is just another view of the corridor showing some of the different segments that have been funded with different grants. You can see in purple, we have that SB1, that LPP grant. In orange, we have the MSRC grant-funded portion that was completed several years ago in 2023. And even prior to that, the ATP grant for sections of County Line Road and Avenue H as well were completed in 2019. This next slide was created by the city of Calamasa. Really, really good podcast led by City Manager Will Colbo online. It's available, I think episode number 47 goes into a deep dive into the history of County Line Road. So I'd recommend anyone who's listening to tune into that and get more detail than we've even provided in these updates we've shared here at city council meetings. This is just another type of visual that shows all of the different projects that have been taking place or will be taking place along this stretch of roadway here. You know, for many years now, we've seen a lot of construction activity. We've talked about it. And I think for many of us that drive that corridor, I think it's easy to just consider that as all one big project. But we've definitely got a series of projects that have been taking place. We'll hear a little bit from the city of Calamasa's staff tonight with about, with some of these projects that are coming up in the future. But you can see on here, at the very top, we've got that LPP project, which is primarily those intersection improvements. We touched on those other grant-funded projects. And then we also have a series of utility projects that took place that were led and managed by other agencies, South Mesa Water Company, the Ucaipa Warehouse Project on the other side of the freeway, and those sewer and waterline projects that went with that. There was the connection at the Bryant Street location. An upcoming work here with the past agency and some of Calamasa's projects that we'll talk a little bit more about. But just another visual here to show us some of the complexities and just the sheer amount of construction that's been taking place on County Line Road that had presented some of the challenges from scheduling and coordination. And then finally here, another slide is showing some of the different agencies that have been partners or been involved with construction one way or another on this corridor. This is not a comprehensive list, but you see a bunch of different jurisdictions that have their own requirements and contracts that they're managing and our ability to coordinate with them. I think we've had some success, but also certainly some challenges that have been introduced into the schedule for all of the different contracts. Important to note, you know, one agency we don't see up here but was an important player was Southern California Edison. We had a lot of coordination on the front end and through construction of that project. And unfortunately, we did have to wait for some of those relocations to take place for us to facilitate and complete some of those roundabout and street improvements before we were able to complete those and open those up to traffic. I'm gonna pause for a moment in my presentation. I'd like to invite City Manager from City of Calamasa, Will Colbo, up and his representatives to provide some more information. And then I'll jump back up after, and we'll all be here for questions after as well. So we'll let you take over. Thank you.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the council. Will Colbo, City Manager for the city of Calamasa. When I saw that this item was requested by the council to come before you, I jumped at the opportunity to come and share our perspective as well because obviously we are partners with the city of Ucaipa in this project, and we are the lead on the LPP portion of the project. I do want to say that our partnership with, specifically with Fermin and Landon, has been very, very cordial. It's been great. They've been great to work with. And so from that standpoint, they've been great partners. And we've also commiserated together with all the frustrations and obstacles that this project has made us face. We certainly recognize the frustration from your council. Our council shares that frustration. It's been just challenge after challenge with this project. It seems like Murphy's Law. Anything that could go wrong, did go wrong. And so unfortunately, but, you know, Landon mentioned the podcast. It's at calamasa.gov/podcast, so just shameless plug there. But I also wanted to just point out with all these agencies involved too, I think one of the things I will... Um, but I also wanted to just point out with all these agencies involved too, I think one, uh, one of the things I will say is that with, um, with all these agencies involved, I think there's a, there's a, there's sometimes a misperception out there that cities have this unilateral power to just do whatever they want and can just impose their will on over, on all these other agencies, and that's not simply, that simply is not the case. As a matter of fact, with some of them, they actually have superior power to us, the ones that are state agencies. Um, the ones that are local agencies do have lateral powers to what we have, so they have rights in our streets and they have rights to their utilities that we cannot stop for them from, from doing. So in order to, you know, if we were able to, um, you know, know all of these projects from day one and be able to coordinate on a regional level, that obviously would have been ideal, and I think we'd be having a much different conversation, but obviously it just didn't happen that way. Um, so I'm gonna hand it over to our City Engineer, Mike Thornton, who's gonna go over a couple of the, uh, projects that were on the previous slide that we, um, we, we are, that are on the, uh, books for us, so I'm gonna hand it over to Mike now.
Thank you, Will, and good evening, council. So just briefly, the two projects that are kind of on the upper left-hand side of the exhibit that's on the screen, which is, um, Cala Mesa Creek, um, that is a drainage project to help us reduce flood, flooding potential along the corridor. It has been primarily funded by Riverside County Flood Control District. It will be operated and maintained by the Flood Control District. What it includes is a basin, the, we have closed escrow on property that's at Third, right next to the Seven Eleven. We will build a retention basin there, slow the water down at that point. It does go down a trapezoidal channel and then comes into an unimproved channel, goes right along our fire station, and there's been historic flooding there. That project is well over ten million dollars of regional zone funding that the Flood Control District has put into the project. We are working diligently with the Flood Control District to get our plans approved, and we anticipate being out to bid toward the end of this current calendar year. So that project will come early next year. The other project that's shown there that is on the books is Cala Mesa, Cala Mesa Boulevard, County Line Road Intersection. Um, we did receive a earmark from Congressman Ken Calvert. Um, he, um, funded four million dollars toward construction of the project. Once the storm drain goes in, then we will move forward with the intersection construction that'll kinda finish the entire corridor. It's been a long time coming, but we are getting very close to being completed. Jerry Lewis, Jerry Lewis originally funded us, I don't know if anybody remembers Congressman Lewis, very good congressman member. Um, he, uh, helped us get the project started. Uh, we're hoping to have that done by the end, uh, or the middle of next year to kinda complete the entire quarter. We're available to answer any questions if council has anything for us.
Thank you, Will and Mike, again, for the partnership and for providing more information on those projects. We appreciate all the hard work and, and collaborative effort to achieve this project and get it done and, and be fiscally responsible and, and do the best we can to coordinate with all these agencies. Um, so, so what's next? Um, at our last city council meeting on August twenty-fifth, City Council awarded a contract to Matich, uh, to complete the, uh, street rehabilitation, uh, project for this fiscal year, and that was a part of our larger annual pavement management program. Uh, that contract does include the repaving of County Line Road, um, from Bryant to Cala Mesa Boulevard. Uh, and the City of Cala Mesa's, uh, providing funding to the City of Ucaipa, uh, through, uh, previous paving agreements, uh, for their fair share. Uh, we did have our construction meeting with the contractor last week, and they let us know that they're currently scheduled to begin, uh, County Line Road repaving in mid-October, and they expect that to take place through the, the month of November. Um, they, they will do what they can to try to, um, expedite that schedule if possible. Right, right now, that's the update. Um, they will be beginning work up on the Bryant, uh, segment at the top and kinda working their way down. Um, and then now that South Mesa Water Company has finished their waterline, uh, replacement project, um, the next, uh, project that will be taking place is the Sangre Gonia Pass Water Agency Project, where they'll be rehabilitating that old water line, uh, of South Mesa's and conveying water to a groundwater basin, uh, over, uh, South County Line Road near Fourth Street. Unfortunately, they had to go back out and rebid that project through a recent, uh, board meeting action, and that project is now anticipated to, uh, occur after our repaving project. Um, they were really hoping they could get that in before, but, um, they're, um, planning to award that, but on September fifteenth now, and so, uh, we, we simply need to get out there and rehabilitate this section of the road. Um, and, and they've re-scoped their project to try to minimize the impacts to this new pavement we're anticipating to take place in October and November. Um, and we'll be working with them to make sure that any trench construction that they do will be, um, repaved. Uh, though it'll be a longer, wider section, in some cases maybe even the entire segment of that road they're impacting. Um, so we'll be working with them closely and the City of Cala Mesa as well on their standards. Um, so we're, uh, looking forward to this, uh, long-anticipated repaving, uh, to improve the condition of County Line Road here with this upcoming repaving contract. And, uh, with that, I'll go ahead and, uh, pause again, I'll, I'll pass it back off to Fermin to kinda close things out, and then, uh, we can all be here to answer questions, so I'll stay here for now.
Thank you, Landon, and I also wanted to, uh, share that, um, you know, we've, uh, appreciate, uh, working with, uh, City of Cala Mesa, um, City Manager, uh, Will Kilbo, and also their City Engineer, Mike Thornton. Um, it's been a challenge, um, you know, appreciate them taking the lead on the construction, uh, management contract. And, um, you know, just to piggyback off of what, uh, Landon mentioned regarding the repaving, um, you know, I, I just wanted to emphasize that when, when, after we repave a street such as what we're gonna do with County Line Road, our current city standards, that they do have, uh, some, uh, restrictions if a utility company is going to be cutting into the brand-new pavement. We do have a, a moratorium that has specific, uh, requirements if they cut or trench into a brand-new street within the first five years. Um, so, uh, we will be following up with the utility companies that will, any of them that may be cutting into the street to adhere to those, uh, more strict requirements. Some of them involve, um, it, you know, if they, uh, they involve pavement repairs beyond where the trench is. In some cases, they have to repave the entire street for a certain length of, uh, length of the street. Um, again, that's something that, um, you know, all cities have, we will, we certainly have that requirement in our standards. So we'll be working with the utility companies on that, and I just wanted to also, um, end with, um, you know, in the perfect world, uh, and we've heard this before, uh, we, we've heard the public mention, you know, why didn't, why didn't they complete all the utility work before they completed their street widening, the roundabouts and all that project, right? Well, you know, several years ago, we were in a, um, uh, we were in a situation where the City of Cala Mesa took the lead and applied for grant funding, the LPP grant funding that you've heard about, three point seven, three point eight million dollars that was applied towards the, the project, and there was a deadline that was associated with that grant funding. We had to award the contract by a certain date. Again, in the perfect world, if we didn't have that deadline, we would have completed all, all the utility work and then started the, the street improvement project after that. But here, um, you know, we, I'll put it like this, we took somewhat of a risk on moving forward and coordinating with the utility companies. Obviously, that was a big task considering the County, County Line Road is a major street that serves two cities, two counties, and it is a major utility corridor. Um, but again, you know, uh, we, we didn't wanna lose the opportunity of that three point seven, three point eight million in grant funding, and, uh, again, appreciate the City of Cala Mesa working with us through that hurdle and the coordination with the utility companies, so. Um, I think that concludes our report, and staff is available for questions.
Thank you, sir. Any public comments?
No comments.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you very much for that, um, very detailed, and thank you to Cala Mesa for joining us tonight. Um, I know over the past couple of years, out of my district alone, I've had quite a few correspondence, emails, phone calls, and they're becoming more and more frequent, and they're becoming a little bit more passionate lately. Um, matter of fact, I have a, a breakfast with one of the gentlemen coming up here in the next week or so to sit down and talk about it. Um, because it's just, it, he's passionate to the point where we just need to have a safe face-to-face contact over it versus a email or a phone call. Um, so I appreciate you all being here, and, and staff, I know, has passed on messages and concerns from me at least, and I'm assuming some of my other colleagues as well, uh, to you all, and appreciate the partnership with you all and working with you, and we're not trying to be a, a nag by keep sending peering and pigeon over to you with all the messages and complaints that we're getting, but it just wanted you to know that, you know, we're getting quite a few of them. So I appreciate you being here tonight, and staff, I appreciate all your work and your, your presentation. Uh, colleagues, have anything to add? All right, it's just a receive and file, I believe, right? All right, thank you.
By the way, on your previous item, I will pass that, uh, request along to our city council, so.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, we are going to move to item number eight, which is a public hearing. So open the public hearing, current time is seven thirty-three. Mr. Matlock, it's all you.
All right, thank you, Honorable Mayor and City Council members. Uh, before you, I bring back ordinance number four fifty or potentially ordinance number four sixty-five for your consideration, um, and confirmation as part of the, the second reading process. So as discussed before, uh, when this item came before you guys on August eleventh, um, really, we're trying to accomplish a number of different smaller code tweaks, um, before we get underway with the comprehensive development code update. And so we had a number of different sections really focused on either updates needed to comply with state law, making sure that we're implementing our housing, housing element program since that is a requirement as well. Um, addressing some of the, the economic development opportunities and fiscal sustainability goals that City Council has established, enhancing public safety, uh, kind of elements and giving, you know, the, the, the flexibility needed to either law enforcement or code enforcement, as the case may be. Um, reflecting kind of our internal processes or procedures, and then just kind of a general cleanup as well. And then at the August eleventh meeting, um, there was, uh, kind of a motion to remove a number of the different sections, um, from that code. Um, section number three itself, uh, dealt with a formal revocation process for land use entitlements. Um, as current practice, uh, when we issue a conditional use permit or the plan commission approves it, there are conditions that say, hey, if you are not complying with the conditions, we can revoke the entitlement and remove it. However, there isn't necessarily provision in our code that establishes what that procedure is or how we go about with dealing with a land use that isn't following, um, what was approved or creating kind of egregious, uh, issues related to that. And then we also had a few other sections of ordinance number four fifty that were approved that also tied into this. Um, section number four dealt with amendments to a land use compliance review, um, had a number of procedural cleanup items. As per the motion on the eleventh, council did allow for kinda retaining this to a very limited scope, um, to only things that were dealt with, um, elsewhere within, or it's number fifty, and so I will discuss what was retained and what was removed in the next, um, slide. Number, section five was, um, uh, dealing with a zoning, uh, compliance process for new businesses. This was intended to replace our annual business license provision. The council may remember, um, the business license applied to everyone that was doing business, including contractors and everything like that. And so it required a lot of different people to apply. It was a very administrative process, um, that used, uh, a system that was very labor-intensive through finance department. And so the, originally, the plan was to develop a more focused one for businesses that are starting up in the city. Right now, without a system in place, we don't know what businesses are opening and whether or not they're allowed, and then the fire department can't track those updates as well for their inspections. Sections number fifteen, uh, sixteen and eighteen dealt with, um, kinda billboard provisions within, uh, city-owned, uh, controlled land. Um, so this could allow for, uh, privately-run billboard with braided sign annotations as long as the, the city is owning that lease and has those controls, or can also allow for local business advertising at the Y-PAC as an example. Um, section number seventeen was again also dealing with sign provisions, but this was, uh, updating our prohibited sign code, um, to address more public safety stuff, so making sure that, um, the current trends and technology for LED signs were incorporated into that. Um, and then addressing, uh, bright flashing lights on the boulevard were kind of the impetus for that one. And then the last section that was removed, um, was number twenty-two, which dealt with automatic withdrawal of enacted projects. Just for a frame of reference, the city does have a number of projects that have, were submitted years ago, have not had, uh, any progress from the applicant, so these just stay on the books until they're voluntarily withdrawn. Do wanna note residential projects do, get locked into the development code to which they were submitted under in the general plan, so if we rezone something or if, let's say, there's new updated policies that get approved, um, those projects still follow what was on the books and can be revived with those old zoning standards. And so as I mentioned, section number four, which dealt with the land use compliance review, did allow for minor updates, and so the items that were included and shown on the track change version is, uh, maintaining the streamlined approval for ten-unit residential projects consistent with state law. This mirrors what the council did approve as well for, uh, track maps and consistent with state law, and then also the provisions for allowing a mixed-use development in the RM twenty-four district consistent with the residential, uh, development rule. So the high-density housing was already allowed through this process, and it's making sure that if they combine the commercial, that would also be allowed. And then what was removed, um, was clarity that only the freestanding and monument signs were subject to land use compliance review. The way that the code reads now is that all signs are subject to that, but that's not how the practice has been. Another key, um, component that was, uh, removed, but just for, for council's reference, is a streamlined approval process for previously entitled projects that had recently expired. So a conditional use permit, let's say, where they're doing a multi-phase project, the entitlement's still going, but they don't finish the last phase, rather than going back to the plan commission and essentially saying, re-approve what you had already approved. This was meant to streamline, um, that entitlement, saying that if nothing's changed in the code, this would allow for administrative review. This was kind of in response to an example with the Ucaipa Point Project where the Kaiser Permanente facility is the last, one of the last two phases of the development. That entitlement is about to expire, which means that in order for that facility to move forward, they'll have to go back to the plan commission for the entitlement. When they are looking at their prioritization of future projects, one that is almost shovel-ready versus one that is not, changes what they prioritize in moving forward, and so as part of the future, um, spoke to their hub-and-spoke model that would potentially put us down on the, the framework, and so that was something that we were trying to address with different tenants, as Kaiser as an example. And then the last one, or kinda last two, was kinda clarity on the review process for congregate living health facilities, so the council did approve a definition for this, but not, um, what type of categorization it would be. So now it's gonna follow our residential care facilities. And the last one is we had some minor clarity on the number of units that could be expanded on an existing project through the land use compliance review. Um, so we have the ten for our brand-new project, but it was to add some additional clarity for if someone was expanding a previously built project. Now, one of the changes that we did want to bring back to council is, um, with the section on the land use compliance review, we were able to clean up some of those elements that needed to be tied together. However, there was, um, still some broken code references, as I mentioned, the revocation process. Um, the ordinance number four fifty did include, uh, revocation process, um, for massage therapy establishments that violate the development code, as well as certain off-sale alcohol establishments, so liquor stores. And so right now, there's no revocation process listed in what was, uh, the council's motion, and so, um, as part of that cleanup item, which is ordinance number four sixty-five, it removes the reference to that revocation process, so we don't have a code section just handing out there that doesn't apply to anything. And so with that, um, uh, staff does want to bring back this item just to get confirmation that the changes that we made were aligned with the city council direction and determine, uh, the code adoption. So ordinance number four fifty with the council, uh, reference, um, does create some defunct references in the code. Ordinance number four sixty-five is the one that cleans it up and make sure that there isn't a broken code element to, um, the changes that were done. And then also, depending on how council feels, is to provide some direction on some of the items that were moved. For example, how do we track new businesses, are they compliant with the city code? Um, how do we enforce the conditional approval, what would the process be procedurally? Um, do we want to have a full public hearing process for previously entitled projects? If it's the same as what was approved before? And then is there any additional direction for congregate living health facilities? And then anything else that, um, that you guys may deem as direction, we'll take. If not, um, the two different codes are available for your action, and that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, sir. Madam Clerk, do we have any public comments on this?
I'm sorry.
Do we have any public comments?
No public comments.
Thank you, ma'am. My iPad went asleep, give me a second here. I have some things to say, but, I mean, I don't have any public comment, let me start with my colleagues first. Do my colleagues have anything that you wanna add to this or ask any questions?
Just one question, I just wanna clarify that the, uh, elect-
I just want to clarify that the electronic sign issue has been eliminated from this totally.
Yeah, it has been stricken out, unless council wants to provide additional direction. As far as that remains, it would be removed.
Okay. When it comes to these items that you're talking about down here, additional direction, the bottom here, you've got four bullet points. So from your presentation, those would have to be brought back at a later time to address those particular four issues?
That would be one way to go about it. As we are back at kind of a first reading of the ordinance, if council wanted to continue kind of the first reading and add items back in with revisions, we could do it that way as well. And so depending on what the direction is, we can accommodate whichever preferences you guys have.
You can all also have discussion, and we can come back at a leader meeting, bring back one, none, three or four, just up to you.
My concern with those four items, some of those things have come up since we voted that night, and I know that's kind of created some confusion. I think, at least I was a little confused probably with that night and what was going on, but I think maybe some of my colleagues were as well, I could be wrong, but when it comes to the businesses and the business licenses, I know at least one council member has brought up a concern of a business here in town, and had we had maybe at least the item up here that's talking about tracking the new businesses, that might have been allowed a little bit more involvement or some knowledge of what was going on or what may or may not be allowed. So I think maybe on a future date, we could bring it back next meeting or at staff's discretion on their timeframe with other things we're looking at, but I think we should probably bring those four things back, because I think that, or bring all of them back that we voted on to make sure that there's not some other issues that have arisen that since we voted on this. I know we got the cleanup item for ordinance four sixty-five. That takes care of it for now, just so that we don't have out-in-the-air code sections that don't go anywhere. But I think there's still some other issues that have arisen since that night that have been coming up, and I think we're going to continue to have them if we don't bring these back. And my recommendation would be, could you go back to your first slide? I think it was like, I don't know, seven points or eight of them?
Oh, these items that were removed.
So if we brought those back and looked at them one at a time, so I don't know if it'd be one staff report with, what is that, one, two, three, six, eight? So either eight recommendations or eight individual items, talk about it and see if there's anything individually with those, because I think sometimes with us up here on city council, if we have too many options, too many things at one time, it's, it might be overwhelming for us. So we, I think we prefer to kind of do them one at a time. Maybe we bring those back, and I'm not sure which is easier for staff, but if it's one staff report, eight recommendations, or eight individual items, which can make for a long agenda, but either way, it's still probably the same content. And if, you know, stuff with the signs doesn't change, so be it, but I think some of these other things has created other issues and other concerns about businesses and how we regulate them and what's going on and what's coming in, and I think we need to revisit those. So at the very least, I think we need to bring those back for another, a future discussion.
So one thing we could do, and it sounds like the sign is fairly cut and dry, so we'll make sure that that's removed. We can probably bring everything back. For the sake of saving fiscal money, because we have to do a notice of public hearing, which is a couple hundred dollars, is we could probably combine it into one report, but have a bunch of different kind of motions, and then that way, we can have a deliberate discussion on each respective one, but also be mindful to the taxpayers for that public hearing notice.
Sure. Okay. Any other comments? Heard you saying something.
I do agree, like what you said, these four, because the living health facilities was definitely brought to my attention. I do have concerns about tracking new businesses. The previously entitled projects, I understand, could affect Kaiser, which is important to us, and I think these last four items especially. Oops. As far as the signs go, we said we're done with signs, so that would not need to come back.
Okay.
Any other comments?
So does this, this is cleaning it up right now, right? Are you cleaning this up right now by bringing this motion?
So the motion right now, or for the ordinance number four sixty-five, just removes any of the essentially dead references in the code as it was approved. The items where the additional direction on, this does not include it in the current draft, because those were completely deleted from the code. And so it sounds like that we would come back for discussion on those as a separate ordinance.
When you gave direction on August eleventh, some of the items listed, the four and the ones for the previous slide, all of them were taken out. So four sixty-five just addresses the areas as a broken code, but there's a lot of other tools that now are completely off our plate, that we can't even address if a new business comes into town, or how to ensure conditions of approval are completed, or if we have entitled projects like Kaiser, there's no ability for staff to give an extension to encourage them to continue to come to Ucaipa. Congregate living is something that you had brought up, and then if you go to the previous slide, Ben, another area that staff, I think, would be, we're encouraging you to give us direction, Ben, the original. Automatic withdrawal of inactive projects, we have some projects that have been in the queue on the books for ten, fifteen years, that they're never, there's nothing going on with them. We wanted to have, and I'll let Ben take this over, but we wanted to have the ability to reach out to say, are you going to do the project? If you are, great. If you're not, then you should probably start over, because we want to ensure that it's in compliance with local codes, ordinances, and code.
Yeah, so there's a few projects that I think even predate when I had started with the city over ten years ago, that have been on kind of the books. You reach out to them, no response, and so there's nothing in place that says, hey, we're going to dump this. It really came to, and understanding when we went through our Tyler implementation, where we went from the old system to the new one, and we're trying to do the cutoff between what files all get carried through, and it's like, okay, it would be helpful to be able to say, okay, nothing's going to happen with this, we're just going to issue the refund check for what work hasn't been done, and just if they want to bring back that project, since they hadn't talked to us in many years, is they can come back at that time and move forward, but that way, we don't have stuff just kind of sitting, languishing out there that we're not getting any response for.
An example of this is now if a project residential comes before the city of Ucaipa, they have an option, if they're a development, to do an LLM-D or an HOA. That ensures that the public right-of-way areas look nice and clean from the street as you're driving by. If something was adopted ten to fifteen years ago, there wasn't that requirement back then. And so if that housing, if that residential development was built, they would not be mandated to put in an HOA or an LLM-D. Those are the items that we're kind of talking about with you. Something for you to consider.
Thank you, ma'am. So back to the staff report, we've got options one and two. So option one is no change, and option two is cleaning up the code sections that are broken. Do I have a motion from my colleagues?
I'll move to go with option one, as originally stated.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
All right.
Just letting you know that that does not fix any broken code. Now we're back to a broken code.
All right.
Ordinance number four sixty-five is the original intent, but it fixes the broken code.
I got it now. I withdraw that. I want to ask, I withdraw that. I want to ask something of you, Ben, and thank you. We've had you running around doing a lot on this. Every section there, three, four, five, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, and twenty-two all had repercussions, right?
Yeah, they were all meant to address something specific that is right.
So the fact that we did not like them or something, they all had repercussions with what we were trying to do. So in a summary, can you say, what are the repercussions for not moving forward on these?
So I guess the repercussions is if a land use, for number, section three, let's say, for example, if a land use is not following the rules that were approved by planning commission, or let's say in the case of a massage therapy establishment, which is part of the broken code, you know, where they are doing some egregious stuff, there's a revocation process, but is not defined, so no one knows what it is, which means that we're not able to do it correctly. The section four is really just making sure that the last pieces of items that were done all line up and kind of work correctly within the code. Number five is without having the zoning compliance process or the business license, which applied across the board, is we don't know what businesses are coming in, and so we're being much more reactive to whether or not they comply, or more importantly, we don't know information about what is operations of that business ahead of time, so we can either advise them on things that are compliant and not compliant, and instead, we're still just responding. The sign codes, I think, are relatively straightforward. Fifteen, sixteen, and eighteen would prohibit the ability for the city to do off-site advertising on a city-owned piece of property, so be it the Y-PAC or another facility. Number seventeen just kind of limits code enforcement related to signage, so a lot of provisions are already there, it's just they don't address modern technology, but that's okay. And then last one, number twenty-two, is that the projects that were submitted and remain on the books will continue to do so. So if a residential project, for example, comes through, they would be able to follow old rules, and if we had adopted new policies, Jennifer mentioned, you know, a few, but even like our public safety funding, CFD requirement that was added in in twenty twenty-four, none of those would get carried over, because we kind of applied those newer standards in place.
Thank you, Ben, I appreciate that. I apologize for the way I preference the first one, I was thinking of my no vote originally, but now I see what you did when you amended number two. So these all had repercussions, clearly. I think we just need to take our time, maybe if it's brought back again, as the mayor said, because it all had a balance on the other end of now we can't take certain action. That's where I was a little, you know, poignant about, I would say.
At the risk of running long the meeting, Mr. Mayor, can we ask for, can I ask for a five-minute recess before we make a vote on this matter? Please?
Sure.
Okay.
Current time is seven fifty-five.
Automatic withdrawal. Withdrawal.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, we're going to get started again. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we're back from our recess, a little bit longer than a five-minute recess, it's currently eight oh three, public hearing still open. I think we were just having a comment, I don't know that we had... Did we come to a motion? We had a discussion about a couple things, but you had a motion earlier, Mr. Miller. He was true, okay. So do I have a motion on this item from my colleagues?
And Mayor, if we could just make sure to close the public hearing before we take a council motion, please.
I can do that. We'll close the hearing at eight oh three. Now we'll take the vote. And does it need a roll call vote, doesn't it? All right. So I'll need a motion in a second. Okay, hearing none, I will make the motion. I'll make the motion for item number two, which is resolution... Let me get to where I'm supposed to be here. What number am I on? Four sixty-five.
Would that motion include them bringing back these four at the next available council meeting?
Yes.
I'll second that motion.
Got a first and a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right. Oh, that was supposed to be roll call, my bad. I got ahead of myself. Okay, so let's try it, we have the first and we have a second. Now I'll turn it over to you.
Councilmember Beaver?
Yes.
Councilmember Miller?
Aye.
Councilmember Woolsey?
Yes.
Mayor Per Tum Venable?
Yes.
Mayor Thorpe?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, now item number nine. Opening the public hearing, current time is eight oh five.
All right, thank you all, Mayor and city council members. We are here to introduce or to discuss introduction and first reading of ordinance number four sixty-two, which is to implement the 2025 building codes. Now, every three years, new additions of the California building codes, which includes the fire code, the, you know, electrical code, the plumbing code, gets approved by the state. And so the current code cycle that we are under is the 2022 to 2025, which went into effect on January first, 2023. Now, in preparation of January first, 2026, it's time for us to adopt the newly approved state codes. Now, the state codes go into effect on January first regardless of our action. However, the state does allow cities to implement their own minor amendments as part of this process, so it's to address things that are part of our local climatic, geographic, geological needs that are specific to Ukeipa. So we have things that are, you know, specific to how the city operates or the topography, the wind load, you know, the snow rating that is specific to Ukeipa. And so that is what is a part of ordinance number four sixty-two. Now, I do want to note, kind of overall, the amendments to the code are really just carryovers from the last cycle. There's not much that changes between each cycle. The most notable change with this round is that many of our local fire codes that we had in place, which dealt with our FR overlay zones and the very high fire severity zones, are no longer within the California fire code and need to be part of our local amendments. There's a new California Wildland Urban Interface Code. And so a lot of the old provisions that were become redundant are now removed. And then we also made sure that all the other changes are tied to this ordinance. Lastly, kind of part of the update, any section references that may have changed with the new code were also updated to make sure that they point to the right stuff. So they may add little bits and so the numbering of, let's say, three oh two of the building code is now three oh three, and so we want to make sure that our references line up with that. I do want to note, an urgency ordinance is also proposed because of Assembly Bill number three oh two, which lots in the residential standards to those that were in effect on October first. The building code update is still happening, so the October first and the fact that the building code goes into effect on January first doesn't matter, but it's unclear with that law whether or not the local amendments kind of fall within this thirty-day post-second reading kind of timeline. And because it's unclear, it's better safe to be sorry, so we're doing urgency ordinance just to say, these are the standards, and then come January first or the second reading, they just carry over, so there's no changes there. And then for council's reference, resolution number twenty twenty-five dash fifty-five is also included for reference and will be acted upon as part of the second reading of this code. That addresses SASS presentation, I am available for questions, and our building official, David Fredborg, is also available, and he is whiz at the building code, so. That concludes it.
All right, thank you, sir. Any public comment, ma'am?
No comments.
No rebuttals, so we will close the public hearing, currently eight oh eight. Council discussion? No? Okay, so items one and two we'll do as a separate, because item three requires a four-fifths vote. So let's do items one and two first. Do I have a motion for that?
So moved.
I'll second.
We got a first and a second. Roll call, ma'am?
Councilmember Beaver?
Yes.
Councilmember Miller?
Aye.
Councilmember Woolsey?
Yes.
Mayor Per Tum Venable?
Yes.
Mayor Thorpe?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, item number three.
So moved.
Got a first and a second?
Councilmember Beaver?
Yes.
Councilmember Miller?
Yes.
Councilmember Woolsey?
Yes.
Mayor Per Tum Venable?
Yes.
Mayor Thorpe?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay. That brings us... I just turned myself off. That brings us to comments and reports from council members. I'll start on my left. Councilwoman Woolsey?
Okay. On the twenty-sixth, I attended the Measure S Oversight Committee meeting. Twenty-seventh, the Sigma Water meeting. The twenty-eighth, the grand opening of the ZM Truck Factory in Fontana. Phil, you're laughing at me. September second, the Water District meeting. Third, the Omnitrans meeting, the SBCTA meeting, and the SCAG meeting. On the fourth, Chamber Breakfast, the SCAG Zoom meeting here at the City Hall, and the ribbon cutting for the Mikey's Liquor Store. And I do have a comment, if you want it now.
Right ahead.
Okay. Actually, at the Planning Commission on August twentieth, there was a discussion and a vote taken on the donation bins, and I submitted a request on August twenty-first to have that brought back to the council for review. I expected it here tonight and it didn't happen, so I'm requesting that that be on the next agenda.
Okay, so do I second it? Do we have any council members that... I'll agree with that. Okay? You all good?
Absolutely.
The clothing bins?
Okay, so consensus says they would like it to come back.
So, so Mayor, any member of the council can request what's called a call-up, which is essentially, it's similar to an appeal, but it's where the council is the reviewing body, asks an item to come up. Here, Councilmember Woolsey made that request within one day, just so everyone's on the same page, the request needs to be made within ten days of the decision.
And this council has the authority to overturn the Planning Commission's approval of that?
Yes. Or modify it, you could add additional conditions, or you could allow it to remain as is.
Okay. You have anything to add, sir? No comments?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. I wanted to recognize our superintendent for Ukeipa-Calamots School District, Kelly Binks, has received the AXA 2025 exemplary woman in education award, which is a huge award, and it's for her dedication and leadership and the impact on education for those who've been inspired in our district and around California. Her Women in School Leadership Forum will take place September seventeenth through the nineteenth in Santa Rosa. We have a great superintendent and she is going to be honored for her years of service and what she does, so I just want to recognize that, knowing working with her and how valuable the state is recognizing her for that award, so I think that's awesome. And then I want to bring this up, I've mentioned it a few times to staff, about our varsity baseball field, that we have the property there, what are Ukeipa High School Varsity Baseball Field plays. So they started the fall season, and if you guys know that our players are bigger, stronger than ever, and with the metal bats they use now, no longer just aluminum, foul balls are flying about eighty to ninety miles an hour off a foul ball. So I've talked with Fermin and Jennifer about getting that fencing brought back in front of us, especially if you're a right-handed batter, the foul balls that are going right into the stands on the right field or first base baseline, and say, left-handed batters for the third base line. I look at it as a risk management issue. If it's predictable, it's preventable. These balls are flying like crazy, you've got seniors and kids. That is our facility. I've mentioned it for about the last several months, and I'd like to get it back in front of the council, because some of these... I watched a couple of families almost get nailed, and then we're starting the fall season again, and, you know, it's just, it's inevitable. And I just think we need to bring it back. I know Fermin has a plan that they're trying to draft up to maybe increase the fencing along the first base and third base side, so at least prevent that foul ball. I mean, Major League Ballparks have done it, they've done it with netting. Most of the season this summer, every travel ballgame I went to, Fields had netting down the sideline, so people are in the stands on the first or third base line, they aren't getting nailed by foul balls that are extremely fast. So I, you know, was ready to sit to bring it up on a council meeting, but I want to see if I can get it brought back to council as an item that we can consider, and I believe it's a safety issue. It's our park. I'd like to improve all the parks, so thank you, Councilman Beaver and I are on a committee. We're trying to work holistically on a bigger issue with all of our parks, but it's something that I see when I'm at the games. I know Mr. White goes too, he's there, I'm not asking you to comment, Phil, but, you know, we know the velocity of the balls going to the stands, and I can just see a grandparent, I saw a couple just dodge a little last week, so if we could take a look at that, city manager, I sure appreciate it and bring it back to us. And maybe Fermin, I think you've drawn up a plan already, right?
Yes, if the city council concurs, we can bring that item back for your consideration.
Thank you.
Do you need a vote for that, or what? Yeah. Just consensus?
Do we have a consensus?
Yes.
Yeah. We're good.
We're good. Got anything?
I got a challenge for our whole team right here.
All right.
So, and it's... Megan maybe can keep us accountable for it if I challenge every one of us to try to raise ten thousand bucks for the fireworks.
I love it.
Yeah? You good?
I'm in.
All right. You in?
Sure.
All right. So that's five...
Gee, did you go to the community meeting room really quick?
All right.
All right.
Well, thank you, guys.
Excellent, Chris.
Yeah, thank you.
Councilman Beaver? You're up. Phil, can I count you in for five thousand? Thank you, man, I appreciate you. I'm already halfway there, all right. All right. Thanks for entertaining me last meeting from our nation's capital, I appreciate everybody's patience with all the roll call votes, I know that's tedious. I was there for the National Homeland Security Conference. I was able to meet and discuss different items with our congressman's staff at his D.C. office, which is, I haven't done that before, so that was a pretty cool interaction with our congressional representative staff there at his D.C. office. But as a bigger picture, our homeland security, the private sector that's feeding homeland security equipment and communications and crowd control is just, I hate to say it, it's miles, it's light-years ahead of us where we are in the city of Ukeipa. And our councilman Miller already said it, if it's predictable, it's preventable. I know it comes down to money, but we've got to do, we've got to be ready. I saw the, every year we see the Christmas parade and I just see it's open to vulnerability and we've got to do better for all things. So if there's a way we can... Grants, leaning on our county partners to help us out with different things, some of these, I know some of these grants that other, our neighboring cities have, actually kind of require them to share their equipment with us if we ask for it, so maybe we need to reach out to them as well. Some of these trailers that we, I just actually saw one purchased, it's like two hundred and ten thousand dollars, but it can cover the entire length of Ukeipa Boulevard for all vehicular access points, streets and driveways. So it's similar to Spike Strip, it's a metal gate that looks kind of like this, and you lay it the direction of vehicle travel, and when a vehicle hits it, it props that vehicle off the ground, they can't get through it. So I get it, it's expensive, but I've also said several times, the only thing, the only thing more difficult than preparing is explaining why you didn't prepare. And that's going to be one of those things is, God forbid, we find ourselves on some national news, I know following January first of last year, somebody ran through Mardi Gras and killed a bunch of people, and it's tragic, but we have to learn from it. And it was an eye-opening event to walk through this vendor row of all these, I mean, they're out there, and what we're thinking of, oh, that'll stop a vehicle, there's somebody designing something that's going to stop and intercept people talking about a vehicle going through. I mean, it's mind-blowing what our homeland security folks are conceiving at the moment, so. I'm never going to stop talking about it, I know it's an uncomfortable thing to talk about, it's probably uncomfortable for our finance director to think about, us trying to invest more into it, but it's something we have to, we just cannot fail in that regard. So I'm going to keep on bringing it up, I won't stop, I'm going to keep on going to conferences and finding newest, bestest things, and I'm sure our city staff is going to get tired of me going to conferences and bringing back ideas, and be like, okay, can somebody stop sending that guy out there? So that's all I have, thank you. Thanks, sir. With that, I've got a couple things. Thursday, this Thursday, the eleventh, this nine eleven service will be held out here in our park in front of City Hall at four P.M. So for those still here and those listening, if you want to come out and be a part of it and memorial service for those that lost their lives and all those folks that tried to help people out and lost their lives, so come out and myself will be there, the fire chief will be there, and some other folks, so we'd love to have you there. Since our last vote, I've had, excuse me, spent a lot of time in my brain thinking of different scenarios related to our freeway corridor, our specific plan, and staff has done a phenomenal job about presenting a lot of information over the years and bringing things forward, and we've had several different study sessions, but one thing the councils have never done over the years is if the freeway corridor plan does not go through, what does that mean for Ukeipa? Financially, housing element-wise. So I would like to see if there's a way not to give you more work, but if we could have a study session in the near future, come back and look at, what does that look like? If I'm not mistaken, five hundred homes have to be built in the freeway corridor area that are low-income housing, that has to be done, I think something, some forward momentum has to be demonstrated by 2029, I think. If that doesn't happen, where do those go? If the state determines that we're not making any movement to move forward, our housing element gets decertified. So if we don't put them down there by the freeway, whether it's the five hundred or it's the twenty-four hundred, does that mean that we need to try to figure out another place in the city to put them? Do we split them up between the five districts? Twenty-four hundred homes amongst five districts? Do we have places for them? If we don't get the revenue down there because we don't have infrastructure, what does that mean finance-wise, longevity? So I think we need to start asking these hard questions because they're in the horizon, there's movements about a referendum, whether or not it's successful or not, we'll see, but it's a real topic, I think. We've got to figure out if this doesn't move forward, what does that look like? I don't think anyone wants to talk about it, but I think we have to, and sometimes we have to talk about things and look at things that we don't want to do. But I think it's something we need to consider, so if staff could do something to set up a study session in the future, look at that and see what that looks like, whether it's satellite images of all five districts, and we start pointing at spots that we think we can put twenty-four hundred homes, whether it's North Bench, it's old District Five, or District One, or District Two, or all-in-one district, or split them up, whatever it is, I mean, reality is, those homes have to go somewhere. And I think we've seen in some lawsuits in the past that if you don't have real estate, the state doesn't care. So then you level things and you build up. So I don't think that some of our communities necessarily want, you know, twelve stories of apartments right next to our two million dollar homes, if you happen to have a two million dollar home. So anyway, just some thoughts that are going through my brain, and I think we need to start thinking what our next plans would be if this doesn't go through. And that's a real cheery note to end on, but that's where I'm at. With that, interim city manager, you got any announcements?
Nothing to report, other than the ribbon cutting ceremony. Nothing to report, other than the ribbon cutting ceremony tomorrow. Tomorrow at ten o'clock. It may be on your calendars. If not, let me know. We can forward it to you. And then we have the nine eleven event on Thursday at four o'clock in front of City Hall.
Perfect. Next meeting is Monday, September twenty-second, two thousand twenty-five. Current time, eight twenty-four.